The meeting of the Delaware County Commissioner's meeting, Tuesday, February 19th, 9:00 AM, you come to order. Let's stand and do the pledge, and before we pledge, let's have a few seconds of silence for the past shootings. Please, one. Pledge to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, and we will try to slow down a little bit, Mr. Craig Craft, if he could do the vocal, I appreciate that.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. Porter.
Here.
Thank you. We do have an appointment to the Delaware Community Corrections Board.
Yes, Commissioners, I received an email from Jane Miranda, Community Corrections Board. They had an opening for an educational administrator, and they suggested that the Commissioners appoint Dr. Benjamin Gibbs for that appointment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Sheriff, we also need to appoint somebody for the I-69 steering committee, so we can get that moved. Marta Moody stated that she would be interested in doing that, so I'd make a motion to place Marta on the I-69 steering committee.
I'll second it. Marta, it's nice seeing you back.
Yes. Thank you, Marta. You serve us very well. Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. I'd like to pull, suggest that we pull the Health Indiana, it's actually the tobacco, you can pull it off, and I could send a letter.
Can I make that motion to remove the lands for the Healthier Indiana from the business?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
I'll just send a personal letter, that way. They are still deciding how the money's going to be spent, and it's got to be passed through committee before we'll be talking about that, but I'll get that done today. Anything else you want to remove?
John, is that Sheriff's contract ready?
It is.
I'll make the motion to remove the Sheriff's salary contract.
Second.
We'll also have to remove Resolution 2019-02, that's part of it.
Put it together.
All right, I'll put that together in my motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
I did see Peggy out there, I believe, who'd like to remove the Central Indiana Small Development.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Okay. On the small business development, she requested 10,000, we'd been given her 5,000. What's your pleasure?
She helps us, and that organization helps us at times with small business. I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve that 10,000 dollar grant.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of minutes, or do you have anything else? I said everything, I guess. Approval of minutes, please.
I'll make the motion to approve February 4, 2019.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you. We have under contract agreements, so Mr. Rogers is here, looks like he's been a busy guy.
Good morning, Commissioner Jason Rogers, Delaware Emergency Management Director. What I have before you is three grant applications. These three are grants we actually are in the process of receiving. The first one is the 2018 EMPG Emergency Management Performance Grant, that is the 50 percent salary reimbursement from the state. The second is the HMEP, which is Hazardous Materials Preparedness Grant, and the third is the Indiana Homeland Security Foundation Grant. These have, we do not have fully executed agreements from the state as of yet, however, the grant applications and approvals have been submitted and returned.
Can you tell me the mail set of grants?
Yeah, Denise, I've got these, I'll give you these sheets afterwards. The foundation was for $2,758.84. The HMEP was for $8,000 with a $1,600 match. And the EMPG, we just have listed as 50 percent salary reimbursement. I can look back, I'll have Son to look back and see what the 17 amounts were, because they'll be, they should be the same.
You already have funds set up for these, don't you? Put the grant money into.
So, we've done it a couple different ways in the past, and Steve, you might be able to help with this. I don't know that we've, we used to get grant numbers, or we used to get ordinance numbers for each one, and then when the grants came through, I believe there was a fund number created off the ordinance, and then we didn't do it for a while, when they went to the electronic signatures. And when that came through, then I stopped bringing them before you for the blue ink signature, and then we were doing, we've been doing it electronically, and then there's been some change in the process as far as the Oregon's office with SBA, I think.
As far as, are these federal grants or just state grants?
Both.
Okay. Because of the federal grants, the CEP grants now has to have the application, I think that's what you've done here, and all the reporting requirements by state board accounts.
Yeah, so the EMPG, which is our salary reimbursement grant, that's a federal pastor grant.
Okay.
The foundation's a local state grant, and the HMEP is probably, is probably federal, but it's money that comes from the DOT, so I'm not 100 percent sure if it's state or federal.
We'll get to that.
We'll figure that out. So I don't know, for this new grant, for the grant application that Steve at your office sent out, do you know, do we need to get ordinances for each one of those?
I think, I think the Commissioners, if I can pass all of these together.
Okay. Denise, I'll give you these.
You got them?
That's all right.
I just want to make sure whether we need to draft ordinances for these, but we could do that at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve all three.
Great. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
And then while I'm here, would you like to go over the recap sheets from EMS billing information?
For the write-offs.
Just give us the write-offs, please.
Okay. For 2017, your write-off amount is $5,259,529.82. And for 2018, the write-off amount is $5,350,94.68.
I'll make a motion, we write off both those totals.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the DCC, Dave's here with some good news.
Good morning, Jane Miranda from Community Corrections.
So you need a new vehicle?
Yes, we are looking to purchase on a government lease program, a new community service. This is how we have purchased our existing fleet through this program, and it's free yearly payments of approximately $10,000, and then at the end of the lease program, we purchase it for a dollar.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
And then I'm also seeking permission to sell our two older cars from our previous fleet, the 2003 Impala and 2007 Crown Vic.
I meant to send you an email, I don't think I sent about the gov deal, or that Jason's been helping us with, Mr. Rogers. We've had quite a bit of success, so I recommend that you use them.
Oh, for the, the older cars?
Yeah.
Okay.
Were you going to trade them in, or you just?
No, we actually have, I know that Prairie Creek Reservoir was interested in our van, and then we have a staff member that's interested in the car.
I'd appreciate you using this, this makes it more accountable.
Okay.
The Commissioners.
That's fine, just give it to Jason and he'll get that up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, contracts and agreements, approvals for highway.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob and I advertised for their annual highway material bids for asphalt mixes, crushed stone and sand, and fuel. I believe, Denise, that you receive five bids.
Five over here. All right, first one is Milestone, hello. There they are. I'll lock the S3 something. Asphalt mixes, we have various types of asphalt mix, like when asphalt, we also have a bid in here for, looks like it's all asphalt, for Milestone. And we're from $52.75 per ton up to $62 a ton, or $130 for cold mix, they're not bidding on AE-90S. That's Milestone out of Portland. Next one is AgBest. AgBest is bidding on fuel, gasoline, blended diesel, number two diesel, biodiesel. They give two options, an escalating bid price and a locked-in bid price for gasoline and the number two diesel. And they only have an option for escalating bid on the blended diesel and the biodiesel.
What's the number two run?
Number two diesel, they've got an escalating bid price at $2.009100 for a gallon, or $214.900 for the locked-in 12-month price. The gas is $153.900 or $175.900.
With no lock-in?
Locked-in was $175.900 for the gasoline. Next is asphalt materials out of Indianapolis. AE-90, $185 a gallon, $185 a gallon delivered, $185 a gallon at the plant, $196 for AE-90S, $2 at the plant. AE-NT TAC, we're not going to deliver that, $220 a gallon at the plant, and then dust lay, liquid dust control, $175 a gallon delivered, $175 a gallon at the plant. I think those go in one seat. Next I have IMI. IMI is bidding on different types of stone and sand and gravel, number twos, number fours. Do you want me to read all those, or just?
I've got to tie relationships together.
Final one is EMB paving. They have bids on types of asphalt, concrete bays, binder, batuminas mix, it's sort of, well, they didn't bid on batuminas mix, but they've got various amounts for, looks like asphalt material. Those are the five that I was given.
What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to take the bids under advisement, let Angie go through them.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
If anybody is here in the public that would like to look at them further, to watch the highway, just please see Angie afterwards. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Did you say yes or no?
Yes. Okay. Agreement for the bridge, Angie?
At your last meeting, we received two quotes for the repairs of Bridge 63, and I recommend that you accept and award the contract of whose your pride, they were the low bidder, and I would like to include alternate number one for a grant total of $74,878.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And did they give a timeline when they could get on it and get it finished?
They should be down here in a few weeks, but depends on when asphalt planes open up and when they can finish it up.
Very nice, that's been closed some time. That's the one out there north of 332, so, was that one about wooden bridges?
Yes, ma'am.
One down and 20 minutes ago.
I don't have any others closed right now.
Yeah. Okay, how we doing on that? John, were we thinking about doing some posting on those wood bridges or something?
Right, to get with the highway department on evaluating those, I think you're still doing the bridge inventory on the, on the weights for those bridges, aren't you?
For the federal highway, we only have, we're required to post for anything under 16 tons, which we do follow. If you want to do anything additional on top of that, I'd be happy to do so. That's your pleasure.
I see what some other counties are doing, we'll be going to the road school, first of March, so, 16 tons right now.
Sixteen and under.
Okay.
You want to discuss the sheriff's contract and the contracts, we can tell them resolutions.
I'm sorry.
Since we took the paper off the.
Yes, we need them. Sorry about that. You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, and, John, we can do the resolution and the contract together, correct?
You can. Now, understand that under the statute, both the council and the Commissioners have to approve this, and the council needs to consider this at their meeting, which I think is next week.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, next Tuesday, for it to be effective, you can.
We can approve it today and.
You can approve it today, and then the council has to discuss it, and then they have to approve it to become effective.
Right. The council hasn't seen it until.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Sheriff's salary contract and also Resolution Number 2019-002.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will pass this on to the council's attorney for him to distribute to the council members for them to look at it in anticipation of their meeting.
There you go.
Thank you. Ordinance for second reading, 2019-007.
Morning, Marta.
Morning. Marta Moody, Executive Director, Delaware Muncie Metropolitan Plan Commission. This is an ordinance to amend that was considered by the Plan Commission at the beginning of this month, and they returned a favorable recommendation that the basic purpose for the amendment is to remove the language in the ordinance that says that the applicant shall publish their legal notice in the newspaper, change that so that our office will be doing the publication of legal notice rather than the applicant, and that we will be raising our fee schedule to accommodate the additional cost for us in paying for the legal notice. The reason for that is that we have, with the changes of the newspaper and their legal notices now being handled outstate, it has been difficult to, to deal with that process and make sure that our notices get published for all of the public hearings in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Plan Commission, so, that's basically what we're doing.
I'll make a motion, adopt ordinance number 2019-007.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you.
It's Jim here.
Yep.
Department heads Delaware County Password Policy, Jim Flue.
I brought in front of you, you all got a copy of the ordinance, not ordinance, it's a policy.
Yep.
Okay. Back last year, we were asked to review the policy for the county, of how passwords were changed, the strength of them, and trying to come up with a industry standard policy. Back last October, I presented this to the HR department for consideration, and with the change in the HR directors and everything here on behalf of the HR to present this to you for consideration, and further, if it is accepted, to apply it into the employee The biggest changes in here is that it's going to require them to change their password every 90 days. It's going to put a policy in there that they have to have an upper lowercase and a number in their password, and they cannot repeat using that same password for five times, I guess, 10 times, I'm sorry. And that's kind of follows what the industry uses, and it's just another protection for the employees of the county to use at their computer site and not have the potential of attack, because we found that in the industry out there, that there is people that can eventually grab some old passwords that you've had, and I think Angie had brought one by ten, few months ago, where it wasn't a password she was using now, but it was one that she had been using in the past, and they were trying to let her know that they had hacked her, they were going to use it. So it's there, and it's part of the industry you've got to deal with out there, the corruption in the internet, so, they don't need to have anything decided today, I guess it's under consideration, and then decide with HR whether it's going to be implemented in the handbook. And if it is, then we will set up a policy schedule to start implementing this out over the next period of, it'll take probably a month or so, maybe two months to deploy it, because we don't want to do them all at one time, it'd be mass hysteria, because everybody's been using maybe the same password for the last five, six, seven years, and they got to start remembering what you're using.
I am glad you made it, 90 days, I think there's been talk, do that more often than.
There is, you know, different thoughts of how long they should have to be redone, but it's, it's kind of a standard here of 90 days. I think the state requires on some of their financial applications, it's like 45 days. So it's kind of falls within the realm of not exceedingly, and not too long, and not too short. One other note, that we will also be sending out a notice 14 days prior to that email password expiring, and that will give them some time to start thinking about changing it, and hopefully they don't wait till the last day and change it. We've got some, a couple things that we're looking at to make it easier for them to change their password. If it doesn't get done in a timely manner, they get locked out.
And changing the smartphones, too, at the bottom. What's your pleasure?
Yeah, your smartphones will also have to be changed, those seem to get affected, or we've been testing them for the last three months on the IT side.
So it could be somebody that's going to have the master list of all these passwords, so, they can be held hostage, or can you override them to get into them if somebody leaves?
Well, from the IT aspect of it, we do manage all the domain accounts, which is those passwords, for them to log into their computer every morning, and we establish that account, and they change the password.
Right.
We don't maintain a list of them. All we can do if they want is we can reset that password if they forget it, and then they can reset it.
Okay, so if they would leave, somebody else would come in, and they don't give them the password, then?
We don't, yeah.
They could override it.
Until he leaves, when we get to PI from HR, we put and go in it, until we find out if there's a hold on that particular person for maybe illegal purposes, we change the password to a standard on our side that will keep them from logging into it.
But you still get into it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, yes.
I don't like it, but I'm okay with it. I hate changing my password.
What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, we approve the password policy.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Can I probably get locked out a lot?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Payments of claims, $1,253,941.63.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Probably have the three minutes to come up and say anything they would like, and wish to speak today. wish to speak today.
I'll make a motion, we go to recess.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yep.
Yes.
And three.